Our Ms. Reddy, welcome to the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for October 5th, 2021, being called to order at 2:07. To help slow the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, City Council as well as Board and Commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/myglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called ScreenWeave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on specific agenda items will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. And with that, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian.
President.
Brotman.
Here.
Bisakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. Any report, please?
The agenda for the Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on September 29th, 2021, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you very much. And what's next, please?
Next would be item number one, Community Development, regarding initiation of code amendments to Chapter 30.36, Density Bonus Incentives. A would be City Council motion to initiate code amendments to Chapter 30.36 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Density Bonus Incentives.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of City Council. This item is being presented to you today in response to direction that staff received back in July 2021 of this year from City Council to provide alternatives to reduce the overall mass and scale of density bonus projects. And staff is providing a menu of options that, amongst other things, may require public hearings, as well as setback incentives, and et cetera. With that, I'll turn it over to Eric Kraus, our Deputy Director of Community Development, for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of the City Council. Staff is before the council today to provide options for council's consideration regarding updates to the density bonus ordinance, which is Chapter 3036 of the Glendale Municipal Code. Topics we'll be talking about today are an incentive menu, whether or not we would like to group incentives and waivers regarding setbacks, possible hearing options for density bonus projects, as well as a financial cost analysis requirement, and then one additional option for consideration. Some of the suggested menu incentive items that were have included in the staff report and is for staff's recommendation to council would include the floor area ratio, lot coverage, street front setbacks, street side and interior setbacks, heightened stories, and landscape open space. As recommended by staff, projects that are consistent with the menu items up to a certain number specified by the City Council would not require a public hearing or be required to provide a financial cost analysis. The council has the option to include all six recommended incentives, or direct staff to include some of these items that are before you today. With the exception of FAR, the development standards included on the incentive menu are recommended to be reduced by 20%, which is similar to the city's administrative exception process, which is done at the director level without a hearing.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
The...
Mr. Agajanian?
Yeah, what's is on screen on TV is not matching with what Mr. Eric Kraus is... Okay, now it's okay. All right.
Oh, I'm not quite there yet, but okay.
Know what you were saying about this. Okay, anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to continue on. I said with the exception of FAR, the development standards include that 20% reduction, similar to administrative exception process that does not require public hearing. Staff believes that the project that move forward in compliance with recommended incentive menu would result in smaller projects, and this is based on initial view of those projects that have already gone through the process, where few, if any, could have actually used the menu that's being proposed before you today. So this chart shows a maximum floor area for each of the multifamily zone and corresponding increase associated with a recommended .5 FAR increase. For example, the maximum FAR in the R1250 zone is 1.2, and with the incentive would be 1.7. Regarding lot coverage, this chart shows a maximum allowed lot coverage in multifamily zones and the corresponding increase associated with the recommended 20% increase. The recommended incentive would result in a 10% increase on the overall lot coverage from 50% currently allowed by code to 60%. The street front setback, similar to other development standards on the incentives, is also proposed to be a 20% decrease. For example, in the R1250 zone, the first floor setbacks would be reduced from the required 20-foot minimum and 23-foot average to 16-foot minimum and an 18-foot average. Staff is recommending that street front setback be treated as a separate menu item from the street side and interior setbacks. Because the street front and interior setbacks are identical in all multifamily zones, staff has recommended that be treated as a single item on the incentive menu, also with a suggested 20% reduction for both the street side and interior setbacks. And I'm going to just keep doing examples based on the 1250 zone because that's the primary zone where we tend to see some of these projects. So for the 1250 zone, the setback is a 5-foot minimum, 8-foot average, and with the 20% reduction would be a 4-foot minimum and a 6-foot average. And the setbacks for floors two and three are also suggested to be reduced by 20%, as you can see from the slide, the second and third floors would be, second would be 8 to 11, as currently 8 to 11, would go from 6 to 9, and then the third floor, 11 and 14, would go from 9 to 11. The heightened stories, the maximum heightened stories in the multifamily zone is 41 feet and three stories, or 36 feet for projects with roof pitch that's less than 3 and 12. So the code currently allows an increase in 5 feet from 36 feet to 41 feet if the project's providing a roof pitch with a minimum of 3 and 12. Staff recommends that projects be allowed to 20% increase in height to 49.2 feet, or 43.2 feet for projects with a roof pitch less than 3 and 12, and one additional story. The additional story could either be allowed across the entire first floor, or if council would like to consider, you know, only a partial second story, or I'm sorry, fourth story in this case, above that next floor, then we can look at that as a potential option. So right now, staff's recommending a full story, but we can actually have the council consider something less than that if they so choose. Landscape and open space, lastly, this is the last concession menu item, also 20% reduction. So, excuse me, this incentive would result in a 5% decrease in the overall amount of landscape open space in the multifamily zones for a minimum of 25 to 27, 20%, with the exception of our 3050 zone, where it would be decreased from 30% to 24%. Regarding the grouping of setbacks, currently, all setbacks for density bonus projects are treated as one single incentive or waiver request. This includes the street front, street side, and interior setbacks, along with the different setbacks for each of the floors. This is similar to the current practice for variance and administrative exception applications, where only one application is required when multiple variances or administrative exceptions are requested. But these requests in Taiwan's include those for a density bonus are not treated as an all-or-nothing application. The approving body can always, you know, decide to approve or deny some or all of the requested setbacks. The staff is recommending the setbacks now be treated as two separate requests, one for a street front setback and one for a street side and interior setbacks. Regarding public hearing options, we have four, you know, available today, and there's an alternate one which I'll go over in just a bit. So one of the options would be to require public hearings before a planning hearing officer for all density bonus applications, regardless of requested waivers and/or incentives. Any of these appeals would then go to Planning Commission, and from there, we'd go to City Council and appeal to the Planning Commission. The current practice is another option, which is director to render decision on application with only those incentives. The project is entitled to per state law and require public hearings before planning here officers where applicants seek waivers, and this is our current process that we're doing right now. Another option would be to require public hearings before the planning here officer where applicant seeks off-menu incentives and/or more than the permitted number of on-menu incentives as determined by City Council. And then, right now, what we're doing is with the practice of no hearing, is where the density bonus applications incentives per, you know, state density bonus law can be processed similar to an ADR and AUP application. So for an ADR, which is Administrative Designer View, and AUP, Administrative Use Permit, the current practice is to post a pending decision for 10 days prior than making a decision on the project, and so we could process that similar to that process, and that requires a public notice as well that's mailed out to owners and occupants within 500-foot radius. So staff is currently recommending that the on-menu projects not require any noticing. However, council could also select an additional option for the director level approval of on-menu projects to require the same noticing as the ADR and AUP applications. Regarding the financial cost analysis, per state law, cities require to grant incentives unless it finds substantial evidence that the incentives do not result in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable housing costs. So the burden is on the city to generate the substantial evidence necessary to deny the request. Staff is recommending that the requests for off-menu incentives or waiver requests require a financial cost analysis that would be conducted by an outside consultant hired by the city and paid for by the applicant. This concept can either be added to the ordinance itself or become part of the actual application submittal requirements. For an additional option for consideration, staff is recommending that council consider removing the additional common open space requirement included in the Glendale Municipal Code, and that's the Section 3031-0207. And we would only make this recommendation for those projects that are seeking a density bonus request under the density bonus ordinance. All other projects that are not density bonus would still be required to provide for that. This code section requires that any project with a lot width greater than 90 feet, using the density bonus increase allowed for multifamily zones, be required to provide additional common open space at the front 50% of lot, and that also has to be contiguous to the street front and street side setbacks. This area cannot be included, the setbacks cannot be included as part of that calculation, and the projects are required to provide an additional 900 square feet plus 20 square feet for each foot of lot width over the 90 feet. Should council choose to consider this option, staff will conduct a detailed analysis on how removing this requirement for just density bonus projects may or may not result in less massing for new buildings, and present the findings when the ordinance is brought back to City Council for introduction. Staff believes by allowing the development to utilize more of the site surface area, we might be able to reduce the overall heightened massing of buildings by lowering the building down. Staff is recommending that the City Council initiate amendments to Chapter 3036 in compliance of recent state laws amendments, and also provide direction regarding additional options and amendments, including menu concessions, the financial cost analysis, public hearings, and also the additional open space for consideration. That concludes my staff report. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kraus. So I'll go to my colleagues for questions. Mr. City Clerk, do we have phone calls?
Madam Mayor, yes, I do have a caller on the line.
Okay, let's hear from the caller first, then we'll ask for questions.
Christine Southseed, you got three minutes? Christine, you have three minutes?
Yes, I'm here, thank you. My name is Christine Southseed, and I'm calling on behalf of the Verdugo Woodlands Homeowners Association. I want to thank council for requesting a review of the Glendale's method of handling density bonus applications. We've read staff's recommendations, and we think the city could do much more to improve transparency and the design and the compatibility of new projects. The point of having a concession menu is to encourage but not compel developers to build in the way you want. Pasadena's menu is very limited. Developers can avoid a public hearing and financial analysis by choosing two of the following concessions: Increase the building height by 12 feet over no more than 60% of the building's footprint. Increase far by .5%. Reduce rear or side setbacks by 50%. They could also choose a parking reduction in high-density areas and an exemption for off-street loading. This menu is very simple and allows developers to take advantage of the most important variances for buildings and additional units. Increase height and increase far, increase height and increase far. Pasadena's height increase avoids boxy buildings because it is limited to 60% of the footprint. And developers cannot automatically get a concession to shrink the front setback, albeit to ensure a harmonious streetscape. Of course, developers can get a reduction in front setbacks or a taller building or other or more concessions if they bring their project to a public hearing and provide a financial analysis. The proposals before you seem designed to make it virtually impossible that a developer would ever have to do these things in Glendale, which does not inspire confidence that developers really do need the concessions they have been getting here. There is no point in a menu when developers can have four concessions for the asking with unlimited setbacks as one of the concessions. Because Glendale's proposal does nothing to guide developers towards choices that would make for better, less massive, more compatible buildings, developers are going to do what they do now. They get to build a certain number of units under state law and without development standards and a constraint, they are free to build giant market rate units. Isn't it worth seeing if a more targeted approach works? The advantages are obvious, and the problems hypothetical and possibly nonexistent. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's, we'll probably get more phone calls, so let's start with that one and go on to my colleagues for questions, comments. Who'd like to go first?
Excuse me, Ms. Madam?
Yes, Councilmember Agajanian.
Just want to see if staff, they can answer the caller briefly. Do you agree, disagree, what you suggest?
Councilmember Agajanian, members of the City Council, it's, without studying Pasadena's projects that have been built with, on their on-menu things, it's really difficult for us to say what's actually being achieved by those concession items. So I can't really speak to that without doing like a more thorough analysis of what designs they're getting with their concessions. Now, they don't have as many development standards that the city of Glendale does have, so that might be why they're only, you know, recommending three concessions on there. And frankly, the parking one that's part of theirs is almost already given by the state. So technically, it looks like they only have three concessions on their menu, but they, I just don't think that their development standards are, you know, basically apples for apples with what the city of Glendale requires in our multifamily zones currently.
Thank you. That's...
Okay, thank you. Next, who would like to go next? Do I have a hand raised?
Yeah.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I did want to, having a conversation. I'll give them a second there. Yeah, I did want to ask about parking. Can you explain a little bit more what you just said and why we didn't consider adding parking to our menu? And, well, that's the first, and I have another question after that.
Councilmember Brotman, members of the council. If you look at the state's codes right now, they're pretty liberal on the amount of parking that has to be provided for a lot of these projects, especially when you're talking about whether or not they're within a half-mile of a major transit stop, then they're really only required to provide a half a space per unit. So I didn't think we wanted to suggest going any lower on our parking standards if the state is already basically making us comply with. I didn't see the reason why we'd want to even suggest even lowering the parking even more than what the state currently permits.
Okay. The other question is, could you run through the process you're suggesting for, you know, what projects go through a hearing and where they are heard? It sounds like you said if they are, if they're all on-menu, and they choose, you know, yeah, they're four left, they're on-menu, then no hearing, or no noticing at all, is what you said. No public noticing, no hearing, nothing. Can you just step through, so if it's, if they want to choose more than four, what happens? If they go off-menu, exactly what happens? Are there any situations where you go straight to the Planning Commission, or is it always, you're always going through planning hearing officer first?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman, members of the City Council. What staff is proposing is that any project that utilizes the menu incentives, whichever of those the council directs us to create, then they would not be required to go to a public hearing. That would still be a director-level decision. It would not require the financial cost analysis, and that's something we would not notice to the public.
Okay.
So the second question you asked was about what, in terms of the Planning Commission versus the Planning Hearing Officer. Right now, in our code, the review authority for everything except for subdivisions and use variances is actually done by the Planning Hearing Officer rather than the Planning Commission. So the only projects that would need to go to the Planning Commission would be ones that include a use variance, or they're doing a subdivision as part of that project. But normally, all these projects would be heard at a hearing by the Planning Hearing Officer unless the director is the review authority. And those would be then appealed to the Planning Commission if someone was to appeal the P.O. decision.
Okay, and do we know, since Pasadena was brought up by the caller, and we got a letter basically, which I shared with the city managers, which kind of went through the same thing, and I believe that the argument in the letter was that we should be, generally, the sentiments was should be taking more of these cases to the Planning Commission initially, and I was wondering if you, if you know how Pasadena or any other cities do that, and do they take more to their Planning Commission? One of the points that the letter writer noted was that, I think, what was the statistic? It was kind of surprising to me, but we've canceled 12 out of the last 16 Planning Commission meetings. I mean, they don't meet very often, they don't do very much. We have a resource there, and I don't know what it's like in other cities, whether they meet as infrequently and do as little as our Planning Commission does, but if you could address that.
Yes, Councilmember Brotman, members of the City Council. So in reading through the Pasadena's ordinance, they have a similar process that we do, and they have, I believe they call it a zoning administrator, which is something the city had at one point, and we changed that back in 2013 to a planning hearing officer. But they have a similar process in that the zoning administrator would make a decision at first pass. There might be some projects in the cases for them that goes to the Planning Commission. I don't know what their Planning Commission's review authority is, but in the city of Glendale currently, their only review authority is on subdivision use variances. So any change to the code would have to be, you know, we'd have to make an amendment to the review authority for the Planning Commission, as well as what goes to the hearing officer and what goes to the Planning Commission would be a different, completely different code change, a code modification. And I don't know, the city attorney knows, whether or not that would be a modification to the charter as well.
It probably would not, but again, to reiterate the point that Mr. Kraus made, Councilmember Brotman, in terms of the procedure, my understanding is our procedure is very similar to Pasadena in that initial hearing on any type of decision, not just, not just density bonus decisions, but CEPs or variances, goes to a hearing officer, and then is appealed to the Planning Commission. They also have designer review, so it's very similar. I think currently, there might be maybe a dearth of items that have gone to Planning Commission recently, but I know it's an ebb and flow. And, yeah, I think the, if you want to have that discussion on a more global level, it should be made as another discussion point, not just related to density bonus applications.
Right, but we could discuss whether we want to put more of this into the Planning Commission as opposed to going through the Planning Hearing Officer. That's something we could discuss today, right? And as part of this.
I mean, as part of the discussion, yeah. We'd have to have a separate discussion to actually give us direction to do that, but if that's something the council wants us to explore, we can do that.
Yeah. That's, I think that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Bisakian or Najarian?
I have a couple fundamental questions.
Okay.
Why do we have to offer any incentives at all? We don't.
We do.
I mean, there's the FAR.
We have, yeah.
Which is required, but are we required by SB 1818 to permit specific?
No, so...
Incentives?
So we are required to provide the density bonus, so it's a bonus above the otherwise maximum allowable density, and the parking.
And parking.
When an applicant applies for an incentive, the city has to grant it, no matter what it is, unless we can make specific findings, as identified in the report, that there's significant impact to public health, or that it's not necessary to, it won't provide, I forget the threshold, but will not provide the additional costs, it won't provide a cost benefit to the applicant. The idea of the menu is, if there are some, if there are some, there's a hierarchy of incentives, ones that you want and not necessarily encourage, that's where you provide the menu so that they're geared towards that, and the applicant will, you know, will be able to avoid a hearing by choosing those. That's the idea. But when an applicant can request any incentive that they want, and then the burden becomes on the city to deny that incentive.
Would the standard that if they don't get the incentive, it makes the production of that housing more expensive, right? Is that the standard?
I'll have Yvette answer that. She can probably speak to it a little more directly.
Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of council, and Councilmember Najarian. Yes, that is absolutely true. If we are able to make a finding that there are no cost reductions, that the incentive does not result in actual identifiable cost reductions, we can deny that particular incentive.
But see, that's what I have a problem over. I mean, anything that's going to make a building higher, more dense, less open space, less parking, which you already have, et cetera, et cetera, is going to be making the housing more affordable, making it, you know, a cost savings. So how do we, I mean, these are great, and I know staff has, you know, gone through this with a fine-tooth comb, but in the end, you're going to get some smart aleck, not smart aleck, some...
Clever.
Clever developer who's going to say, you know what, I don't want any setback, I want to go up. Additional five stories, because if I can't, my housing is going to be more expensive. So how do we, I mean, this is the frustration I think we had, when were we, two months ago or whenever when it came here? I just, I can't, we're setting incentives for them that we would like them to take care of, but they can just say, nah, you know, thanks, but no thanks. Here's my spreadsheet, here's my accountant that's going to show that I can save money if I go up higher, go denser.
And that brings up a good point, Councilmember Najarian. First, I want to say that you're right, that the state has set this law up to make it very difficult for cities to deny an incentive, but we are proposing that we add a requirement to pay for the city to hire a consultant to do the analysis. So at least, we, you know, we may not be able to compel them to have that as the only option. We might want to allow them to hire their own. If they want to submit additional documentation, they can, but at least, and the council can certainly choose to require them to do that, and later, if they want to submit additional documentation, they can, so that at least we have control over the analysis being done, and we get to hire the consultant who does the analysis.
But we have the burden.
Correct.
So if you've got two analyses that are, on their face, equally valid, that doesn't tip the scale of preponderance of the evidence, does it?
It would need to be substantial evidence, but, you know, whichever, we could choose, for example, if our consultant was more credible, or there had more evidence, or if it was a higher quality of evidence, then we could choose to go with that one. We, you know, just in speaking to Pasadena's consultant, she hasn't, the company has indicated that they rarely, if ever, I don't know if they've ever found that it does, an incentive does not result in cost reductions, to your point earlier.
Yeah. So anyway, I guess that's just a frustration. I mean, the whole point of this was to really limit the extent of the incentives that are obtained, but, you know, there's an end around on this, and they have us by state law, anyway, that's...
Right, and the advantage to the menu would, like you said, to direct the developers towards something that we could quote-unquote "live with" as opposed to something a little more...
Less hassle, right? They'll say, okay, I'll take this, and I won't have to hire that CPA to go through this analysis and have a hearing.
Correct.
Et cetera, et cetera. Okay. Thank you.
I can stay up here.
If I could follow up on that?
Okay, Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I think we all agree with you, we're all frustrated, and I think, you know, the idea here was to try, in the very limited way we can, to kind of channel developers down a certain path, because it'll be the path of least resistance, and that's why I do like the idea of a menu. I would like to look at Pasadena, because I think this is, you know, we have very limited scope to play with here. I think we should do what we can within our power, so if we can, you know, offer fewer incentives off the menu, if we can narrow those incentives, to make sure that they're targeted towards the things we want. And that's why I brought up the planning commission. I mean, if you put it through a formal public hearing, like a planning commission, that's again, kind of more friction that, you know, doesn't mean that somebody's not going to do it, obviously. If they really want to do it, there's nothing we can do about it, but we're just trying to use the limited powers we have to guide people down a particular path. So, that's, Councilmember Najarian, that's why I brought up the planning commission thing, and I think why the people that wrote in are bringing up this issue of, you know, Pasadena, fewer incentives and more targeted, and et cetera, et cetera, because that's really all we have to play with.
Thank you. Mr. Kusakian, councilmember?
Thank you. So, just, I need to get this out of the way, because it's been bugging me, and I'm trying to figure out why. Why have we had so many planning commission meetings canceled or have not taken place?
Mayor Devine, Councilmember Kusakian, members of city council. As we discussed, their purview is pretty limited. I mean, they're a recommending body on, you know, code amendments, that sort of thing. We haven't done a lot of late. We're going to be on a lot more pretty soon. So, they hear more general plan level stuff, like we have to go to them with the housing element, we have to go to them with land use element, circulation element, updates, so sort of general, high level general plan land use discussions is what they're more purviewed to. And so, I don't know why we haven't, we haven't had a lot of condo maps of late. Most of the stuff that's getting built is either additions to single family or small multifamily apartments, so we haven't had a lot of parcel maps that they would normally would typically hear. So, on an everyday basis, they kind of typically would hear anything related to subdivisions, and then use variances, and outside of that, then their purview is really on larger land use documents.
And on this item, did they weigh in at all? What was there, on this particular topic, was there a planning commission meeting related to this? Did they have a chance to review it?
No, not yet. We came directly to city council to get a little bit of direction. We're going to go back after this meeting, once we get direction, draft the ordinance, then we're going to go to planning commission to get their recommendation, and come back to city council for introduction and adoption. So, that's the process.
All right. And so, per this proposal that staff wants us to approve, we would still be requiring, or we would ask the proposed developer, or the developer proposing a project, that wants more than whatever allotted concessions to provide the financial feasibility documents, right?
Yes, we would, staff is recommending that we ask for a, you could call it a fee, or the cost for us, for the city to hire our own expert to prepare the analysis.
So, is that, how is that being impacted by this court opinion or the decision of Schreiber versus City of Los Angeles?
Yes, so this was a...
Like, what legs will we have to even stand on to require that? And that's because it's essentially making that impossible for us to ask for, and it puts the burden on the city to prove that there's some sort of specific adverse effect, correct?
Close. This is a recent case, Councilmember Kusakian and members of city council, Mayor Devine. It just came out, actually, a few days ago, and we believe that we've reviewed it thoroughly, and we believe that it confirms a city's ability to ask for documentation, reasonable documentation regarding cost reductions, which is exactly what's in the state law. However, it does reiterate what our office has been saying in the past, based on analysis of legislative history, that the city cannot require a pro forma, which is an economic feasibility. So, it's a little bit different than, the court case says, you know, cost analysis documentation is okay, cost reduction, but performers per se, something a little bit different, are specifically excluded by the legislative history. There are some recent amendments that were made in 2018 that specifically disallowed cities from requesting performance.
Okay. As long as we have the legs to stand on, I don't want to, for us to make a decision, come back, find out that, you know, the decision was, is being interpreted a certain way that doesn't allow us to ask of things. I do agree that we ought to, for those developers that are asking for multiple concessions, we ought to hold them accountable as much as possible, and quite honestly, I do agree that we should limit the number of concessions that we allow. In terms of how this process moves forward, I do think that anytime there is more than, I would limit it to very few, to one or two off a pre-approved menu, and I'd even limit that menu, but when it goes beyond that, I do think, given that our planning commission doesn't have as many meetings as, you know, I mean, with what was shown to us and what was brought to our attention, they're not even meeting really more than twice a year or so. That may hopefully change. We should push it to them and change their ability to weigh in on items like this. You know, it's a matter of, a meeting's going to happen one way or another, whether it comes here or not, you know, I would much rather have people who are dedicated professionally to understanding those planning issues, addressing what it is, and holding developers to the standards that we expect for development here in Glendale. In terms of the setbacks, I will say this much, that I understand the reasoning for wanting to separate the front versus the side, but I am not one that really supports any type of concessions on front setbacks. I do not think that we need to allow anyone to come up closer to the, whatever, the property line or limits. I've spoken about this multiple times, and it irks me to no end, that we allow development in this city that continues to shrink the publicly accessible sidewalks in our cities, and I don't care what the state says, I'll fight them on that. We have to make our city a walkable, livable city, and if a developer says that they're going to give us however many units, let them find a different way from that menu to do it versus the setbacks. That's all my comments for now. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kusakian. As it turns out, I agree with Councilmember Kusakian 100%. I think that the options for the menu should be reduced, and I would be agreeable to two items. And I have a question, though, on if this were to go, if we're to change the process and it would go to the planning commission, would they have to have their cost analysis completed before they go to planning commission?
Mayor Devine, members of city council, we require that as part of the actual application submittal. So, any project that requires it, we would have all that data upfront, so we could present that to the P.O. and/or planning commission.
They do a cost analysis, but they're not paying for it, right?
Oh, we're not, we don't, we're not doing one right now, but we're recommending that we request one. Now, we do analyze projects based on what we've discussed with the cost savings regarding parking, because that's kind of really the biggest one, because if you're only going down one level versus two or three, I mean, that's already a significant cost savings that would, you know, helps with the, providing the level of affordability that they're proposing.
But I'm talking about the other, let's say, items on the menu. If they were to request those, and we would say, it would be in our code, or that they had to do a cost analysis and pay for it, would that be done before it would go to planning? So, the planning would see their argument?
Yeah, Councilmember, and Mayor Devine, so if we, if council member directed us to require a cost, a financial cost analysis on all projects, that would be provided upfront. So, anyone that's making a decision on the project, whether it be the director, planning hearing officer, or planning commission, would see that upfront. But staff right now is only proposing that a cost analysis be done for anything that's off-menu.
Off-menu?
Yeah.
Okay, I get, okay, that's fine. I would agree to that. And I also agree about the, you know, I've always had in my craw these side setbacks that are used in the calculations for the open space, and I want to make sure that that's, those don't become like little narrow strips. So, I, I'm thinking of maybe, because I guess one of the smaller building, less open space, larger building, more open space, so maybe we should use, look at increasing the average for side setbacks in the proposal, or the amendments. But I agree that, you know, a lot of these side streets are pedestrian walkways, and I look at the one that I'm, you know, some of them don't have trees or anything, and I think we need to have nice setbacks so that we can afford. The landscaping will be there, so that would be one of my requests. I also was interested in this 12-foot increase over 60% of the footprint, or height averaging. And I'd like for you maybe to take a look at that, because do we have anything like that in our codes, or?
Mayor Devine, members of city council, we currently don't do height averaging. We have had that discussion a little bit, in terms of the downtown specific plan. So, we can certainly look into that, but that's something that might take us a little bit more to come back with, because it's going to take some much deeper analysis than, but we can certainly look at it.
Well, as I understand it, that's in the Pasadena plan, so maybe you'll see that in their process, so...
Yeah, so real quick on that, so Pasadena does have a height average requirement that I believe is citywide. It's not just related to density bonus projects, so it's already built into their zoning code. So, that's something we'd have to investigate, looking at, and whether you guys want to make that change on a more global basis rather than density bonus thing is something we probably would want to talk about as well.
All right, and I'm also, of course, in favor of bringing the, you know, the chapter 30.36 of our code into conformity with the California density bonus law. I just know that, that, you know, we don't want to make it any harder to build affordable housing, but we do want to make sure that we're doing the best we can as far as the buildings, what they look like, and what we are allowing for our infrastructure, et cetera. So, those are, that's my opinion. Are there any other council member, do we have any more phone calls?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one more caller.
Okay, let's hear from them, please.
Lisa Morris, you have three minutes. Lisa, go ahead.
Hi there, yeah, Lisa Morris of La Cristenta, and we often follow these matters, especially the density bonus, which, you know, is really taking over the city of Glendale, and we're becoming all a concrete jungle. And I think that anything that staff comes up with to reduce the density instead of increasing it is the goal that we want to get to. I listened to Brotman's comments, and Ari's, and also Paula's, and I agree with their views on this. And if it's up to the city to deny a incentive or not, based on whether or not it's needed for it to be profitable, of course, you have to have a financial cost analysis. That should be required, period. So, yes, the closer we are aligned to the Pasadena guidelines, I think, the better. And I agree with reducing the menu system to maybe just the choice of two. I agree that the front setback should not be lumped in with the side and the interior. We should not be looking at ways to allow for, and decrease in open space. If anything, we want more open space, and you're right about the sidewalks. I mean, you've got balconies literally hanging over the sidewalk. You feel so closed in downtown. Let's see, yeah, definitely do whatever is required to allow more public input on these matters in public hearings. That's where we should be going. And, let's see, oh, if you could do anything about the notice requirement going out to 1,000 feet rather than 500, we sort of feel 500 is a little too small, not expansive enough to get all the residents in the area, at least in our neighborhood. So, that, I think, is my major comment, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Of course. Okay, thank you, Lisa. Any other calls?
Madam Mayor, I have no more callers.
Okay, then. Let me ask staff, do you have enough information to move forward on changes, amendments? Do you need more information from us?
Mayor Devine, members of the council, I get, what I heard was, like, I guess, is it a number of incentives that they can choose from that we're interested in doing? Is that too many, or are we just talking about they only get two, period? Or can there be a menu like we're suggesting, and they can pick one or two of those?
I believe it's, yeah, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and I can ask my colleagues, but I am saying that you can leave the menu the same, basically, except for, of course, the setback portion, but they can only choose two from the menu. And if they go off-menu, then they have to have, go to a hearing and a cost analysis for why they want that. Councilmember Kusakian, is that what your interpretation is?
Yes. But I believe legal counsel, I see them whispering to each other, I think they probably want to chime in on that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Kusakian. Mayor Devine, members of council, the way the density bonus law works is, the number of incentives that you're entitled to request depend on the level of affordability. So, there are some projects that only get one incentive, and then they can ask for waivers, of course, but they only really get that burden of proof on the city, you know, for the incentive, one incentive for certain level of affordability, then they might be able to get two if they provide more affordability, and then it's capped at three. There's a fourth incentive for 100% affordable projects, but we're mostly talking about market rate projects at the moment. So, our suggestion is that if council agrees, that we provide a menu of incentives, and the developer can choose one, if they're entitled to one, based on the level of affordability, or two, if they're entitled to two, based on the level of affordability, but they can't go beyond that. So, if they need, if they are entitled to and want to request three, then they have to go to a hearing and provide financial cost analysis. If that makes sense to council, we could go that way.
Makes perfect sense to me. Mike, can I ask my colleagues, are you in agreement with this suggestion?
Yes, I am.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Is you Councilmember Kusakian, or?
Brotman.
Councilmember Brotman, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think the, the letter we got, the caller earlier, and some of the discussion was, went a little bit beyond just fewer items, no, I'm sorry, fewer choices from the menu to actually a narrower, a narrower set of choices that are more focused on achieving the goals that we want, which is, we want to reduce the boxiness, we want better, you know, we just want better quality, better design, more compatible, more human, right? So, I think it's also, if, my request would be, if staff could, you know, look at what Pasadena's done, look at what other cities have done, how come, what's the, what are the right choices on that menu that are going to get us what we ultimately want?
Okay, so what I'm hearing then is, not only the amount of concessions, which would be limited to two, as long as they're entitled to two, and one if they're entitled to one and no more than that, for the menu, but also the quality of the incentives, be more focused on what you just said.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, and if my colleagues agree with that.
Sure.
And I just want a clarification, the consensus was to not include the front setback within the menu at all?
Correct.
Or it, or it could be it's a separate item. I'm not sure I understand that either, Mr. Garcia, which, what does council prefer? I'm not sure I understand that either, Mr. Garcia, which, what does council prefer?
If I may, I think the.
Mr. Brotman, go ahead.
I think the suggestion was that we do not include that in the menu. Of course, somebody can ask for that, but then they have to go through the financial analysis and the.
And the same for the side setbacks?
No, I think we were saying the side and rear could be treated.
Yeah, I just heard front setback.
Yeah, just front, just front would be not a menu item.
Right, right. Okay.
Real quick, in terms of the interior setbacks, I thought I heard Mayor Devine talk about making the menu item less than what we're proposing. Because right now we're proposing 20% for the interior and street side. I thought I understood that we wanted to maybe not have that 20 be, but have it a little bit smaller.
Have it, do, have it smaller? I'm saying to increase the average side.
Okay, thank you.
Not to make it smaller, no, definitely not. Any other questions, comments?
The only question I would have, councilmembers, is if you have any input on the additional option to, for at least to allow staff to study that option.
Which option was that? I'm sorry.
Mr. Kraus can explain.
Yeah, Mayor Devine, members of the city council, that's the alternative option that we're looking at for the additional common open space that's required of all density bonus projects, regardless of if it's affordable or not. So staff would actually like the opportunity to take a look at that and maybe do some modeling to see if buildings can be reduced in massing. And maybe it's, maybe it's only, you know, 400 square foot additional, maybe not 900, just so we can get, see if we can actually lower the massing of buildings by providing more available surface area on the property. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Would a lot, have more open space?
In terms of the open space, I know roofs aren't popular, but they always have the option to put an additional open space on the roof or through some other forms throughout the site rather than being at the ground level. So there's, there's options for additional open space that wouldn't necessarily be at the ground.
Well, I have, see, that, that's where I have a problem, when, when we're putting the open space on the rooftop and not on the ground level. And I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. Can I have a, get any comments on that?
I mean, Madam Mayor, I would be fine with staff doing a study and doing some modeling just to see it. I don't know whether I'll agree with any of the findings, but I'm totally fine with, I'm completely okay with having staff explore the idea because I'm not a planner nor an architect nor an engineer, so.
And to the point, there are common open space requirements that are for every multifamily project. These are just in addition to what's already in the code, the one provision where we'd like to take a closer look at.
Okay, okay, then I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone have a problem with that?
No.
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 So do we need a motion to initiate these code amendments that we've talked about?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia, you want to go over them? Or sometimes I know you like to do that.
Yes, we're going to need a motion, but Ms. Nukin has one more request to pin down.
Sorry, thank you. I just wanted to clarify the hearing option. So what I heard was council would like to continue to, I'm sorry, for anything that's off-menu, to have the hearing be directly to the planning commission, correct? And for anything that is on-menu, to require a financial analysis and not to require a hearing.
Okay, I'm in favor of that, how my colleagues feel?
Up to the two.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah.
And as far as noticing, did council have any direction?
500 was fine.
500 is fine. Councilmember Brotman, are you okay with those?
Yeah, I'm a little confused.
I was just going to say, if they're on-menu, staff is recommending that they do not have to do the financial analysis.
Right.
That's part of the incentive to be on-menu.
Right.
If we, if we have them do that, they may not be inclined to, to take that menu. So that's one clarification we'd like.
So if, if I might, so, Madam Mayor, so on-menu, on-menu, you know, the, the allowed number of incentives, no hearing, it's just kind of a.
No hearing, no financial.
No financial, right.
One thing we would like to hear from you about is on noticing, whether you want us to, to notice the way we have been doing it, just putting it on our site, or do you want some more formal notice that goes out? Currently, our code is 500 feet.
And we would require the developer to pay for that?
Yes.
I would, I would be okay with that noticing.
I would be okay with that, too. And then, but just to, before you go, so if it's, this is, this is the part, so if it's, if they want more than the allowed number of incentives, or if they want to go off-menu, either one, then they would go to the planning commission.
That's what I'm hearing, that council.
I think that's what we're saying.
We'll, we'll need to change that in our code as well.
Okay.
Okay, I think that's, that's what we're talking about. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lenzfing. Okay, then do we have a motion?
I would like to move item one.
So be initiating the code amendments as, as directed by council pursuant to your directions this afternoon.
Yes.
Correct.
The second.
The second came from Mr. Brotman, Councilmember Brotman? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes, thank you all, that was very good. Thank you, staff, for, for the report. And the next item, please.
Number two would be community development regarding consideration of a moratorium on hotel development in downtown, introduction of interim urgency ordinance prohibiting issuance of entitlements and/or permits for hotel development projects in the downtown specific plan DSP area. B, motion directing staff to study and review the DSP hotel use incentive, DSP hotel demand and DSP hotel design, development and land use standards in 2022. And C, motion to note and file report.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Devine, members of city council, as was the case with the previous report, this report is also in response to council's request and direction to consider moratorium of new hotel development in the DSP area while we conducting a hotel demand study and which could include conditional use permit or other regulations that pertain to, to new hotel development. With that, I'll turn it over to Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director of Community Development, for the presentation.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and members of city council. We are returning with the conversation of a potential moratorium on hotel development in the downtown specific plan. If you recall.
Bradley, before you go on, our system is buffering right now. They can't fully see you, just want to make it clear.
Yeah, it's frozen.
It's frozen. What they can see is from GTV6, but they can't see anything else at this point.
Reboot it.
I'll wait until he has the PowerPoint ready.
Give me a second. Give me a second, let me get this out of the way.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're good.
So this is in response to our last council session, the request to consider a moratorium on all hotel development in the downtown specific plan, not just those that have taken advantage of the hotel use incentive. As we discussed at the prior council session, the moratorium must be related to a potential or studied change to the land use code. And this can be a modification or elimination of the land, of the hotel use incentive, as we discussed at the prior council session, or it could be other changes to the process. And, and as part of this session, we would like to get feedback from the council on which elements we should study, which alternatives we should, should bring back. But that can include changes to the process, such as a conditional use permit. Just a little background information, there are a total of 1,193 total hotels in the downtown specific plan. Since 2012, a total of 414 have been built. You can see since 2016, approximately every other year, a batch of hotel rooms has been completed, 94 in 2016, 173 in 2018, another 147 in 2020. As you are aware, there are a couple of the projects in the pipeline that includes the Hotel Indigo and AC Hotel. If those were to be completed, that would represent 137 rooms by 2023 and a net gain of 78 in 2025 because the project for the hotel, AC Hotel, does have an existing number of rooms on the site. So it'd be a net increase of 78 of what's already there. These two projects alone in the pipeline would represent about an 18% increase in the total room count in the downtown specific plan. Some of the recently completed hotels, the Hampton Inn, 94 rooms, that was completed in 2017 at 315 South Brand, the Hyatt Place, 173 rooms in 2019 at 225 West Wilson, and another 147 rooms at North, 199 North Louise, and that was completed in 2020. As stated, that was, that represents a total of 414 total rooms that have been completed in recent years. Just an example of one of the projects that's in the pipeline, this is the Hotel Indigo. This is one of three projects that we do consider a pipeline project right now, the Hotel Indigo at 515 to 523 North Central, that's approximately 122 rooms. They are in plan check and have received their stage one and stage two design review approvals. The AC Hotel, 120 West Colorado, 130 rooms, that is fully entitled, including a development agreement, that has also received stage one and stage two design review approvals. There's the Hilton expansion, a 100 West Glen Oaks, 226 rooms, that has received a stage one design review approval. Some of the things to consider as part of the, the study during this period of time and what we would like to get feedback from the council on is considering, one, the market study update, as you recall from our downtown specific plan update in early 2020, consideration was given to conducting a new market study that, as we have noted, has not been able to be completed during this time, but we do feel confident that we could execute this next year and complete it by late 2022. Any, any potential consideration of changes to the hotel use incentive, that could be changing what type of hotels receive it, if there are certain types that would be preferred to receive that hotel use incentive, what kind of modifications could be made to it or even potentially eliminate it altogether, that would likely come hand in hand with any market study. Consideration of requiring a conditional use permit, that can also be something that could be studied, or removing that from permitted uses as part of the downtown specific plan. Some of the alternatives council could consider today, note and file in decline to introduce an interim ordinance to impose a hotel moratorium on the downtown specific plan and direct staff to engage in the hotel study or any other studies during 2022. Alternative two would be to introduce the interim urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on hotel development with an exemption per our prior conversations with city council, beginning with projects that have received at least a stage two design review approval. And alternative three, council may consider any alternative not proposed by staff. Again, we're also looking for some feedback and direction in regards to which elements we should study during the course of this moratorium. So any feedback on that would be appreciated. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor, can I ask a, oh, you're on mute, and I was going to ask if I could just ask for.
Councilmember Brotman.
A question on the numbers, Mr. Calvert, so you said, if you go back before this 414 rooms that have been built since, it looks like basically since 2016, right? How many were there prior to this?
That would approximately put us over 700 rooms at that time before these have been completed, starting in 2016.
So it was the 1193 total rooms.
Minus the 414. That's correct.
Okay, so that, I get 779. So if we were to look at the 414 and the 215 that's in the pipeline, if we were to add those together, compare that to where we were prior to 2016, I get about an 80% increase in hotel room capacity, basically since 2016. Does that sound right?
If we were looking since 2016, correct. The, the 18% that we reference here is just for those two that are in the pipeline.
And when was it that, again, I mean, I know you probably just said it, when was it that we did the study that told us that we had a reasonable number of hotel, we had reasonable amount of hotel capacity, but we were short in these two areas, which is extended stay and luxury?
Luxury, correct.
When did that, when was that?
Oh, that would be 2018.
That would be 2018, okay. So since that time, if you wanted to take it since that time, okay, there's been, well, I would have to calculate what the increases have been. Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much growth we've seen since we reached those conclusions.
Just to, to, to put it into context, though, the 2018 study anticipated that the AC Hotel and the Indigo would be already built as well as the Renaissance Hotel.
Okay, so I can't.
And I think we had already, we had already completed the Hyatt prior to the study.
Okay.
So that study that said, you're pretty good on, on business class, included those three hotels, two of which are still to be constructed.
Okay.
Anyone else, any other council members?
I just.
Okay, do we have a phone call?
Madam Mayor, we do have four callers on the line.
Okay, let's start with those.
Christina Sanchez, you have three minutes. Christina, go ahead. Christina, can you hear me?
Okay, let's go back to her.
Danielle Wilson, you have three minutes, Danielle?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Devine, council and staff. My name is Danielle Wilson with United Local 11. I want to thank Councilman Brotman for bringing this forward. It's timely, it's necessary, and it makes sense. You know that we support this, we supported it when you first gave direction to staff. I just want to emphasize one element of this, which is why it's so important for the city to ensure that the council and the public, vis-à-vis the council, have input on the hotel development process through CUP at the very least. So we would advocate for development agreement requirements for projects over a certain size, as is required in the Santa Monica Downtown Community Plan and many other plans throughout the county. This is what we've advocated for just across the border in the various community plans being contemplated at the city of Los Angeles right now. And it's very exciting to see the city of Glendale contemplate measures such as the hotel CUP and, and sort of be on the vanguard of hotel planning here. As we've said before, hotels uniquely crowd out housing, and the connection has never been made clear through the pandemic with programs such as Project Room P. And another point is that the workers who make up the backbone of the hotel industry everywhere but here in Glendale deserve to weigh into the development process of hotels as they are the experts in everything from mitigating hotel traffic to design to what chemicals are used in the laundry that negatively impact both the environment and their bodies. Please move forward with this moratorium today and make it clear that the council and the community at large should be able to weigh in on the development process through CUP, a development agreement, or other mechanisms that exist in many other places. And to be clear, we do not feel this way about housing, specifically affordable housing, which is why we spoke in support of the joint power authorities the city entered into to build more affordable housing that was discussed on September 21st. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Steele, next.
Isabella Valencia, you have three minutes. Isabella, go ahead. Isabella, can you lower the volume on your TV? Isabella, can you hear me?
Yes, I do. Do you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Okay, hi, my name is Isabel. I just want to comment, as a Glendale resident, I am really happy to see a moratorium on hotel development come forward. And I encourage you to pass it today. As a member of this community, I also think it's important to the council and members of the public to have input into how hotels get built in this city. So you should also move forward with a plan to ensure maximum public input in the hotel development process moving forward. Besides, another thing that getting bold, we cannot, yes, ignore traffic condition. We already have a very bad traffic in Glendale, so do not let more hotels make the traffic situation worse. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Yes.
Herbert Milano, you have three minutes, Herbert, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. I'm calling to support the moratorium and to have the city give this idea a, an opportunity to identify the overall strategic needs of the city and how the building of hotels meet those, those needs. So what is the driving need for hotel construction? I don't think I have that clear enough, and partly members of the community also don't understand that, at least from my conversations with them. And I was wondering what projects for housing of multifamily have been redirected towards hotels? I remember last year, the year before, that there was a 600-room project for multifamily housing that was somehow turned into a hotel project. that was somehow turned into a hotel project. So I wonder if the need is for housing, especially modern income housing, are these necessarily at odds with each other? I don't know if it is. Because I think that most of the objectives of the city are generally laid out in the general plan and then in the land use element. But I don't often hear any targeted goals and reviews as to how we are doing with regard to meeting the objectives of the overall land use element. So that's what I'm calling about, that a moratorium gives the city council an opportunity to truly evaluate what the overall year-to-year objectives are with regard to housing and hotels. It also allows us to identify how much is being driven by the need for the tax, right? The transient occupancy tax, which has grown significantly in the past 10 years. So I support the moratorium to allow the city to truly give the residents a clear strategic plan with clear objectives as to why and how they are justified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milano. Did we get Ms. Sanchez back?
Yes, it seems like she's still on. Christina San...
Can you hear me?
Christina Sanchez, yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is Christina. I am an organizer with United Local 11. Workers are still fighting to help the hotel industry recover, which will certainly be one of the last ones to do so. In hotels, entire departments are at risk of being cut out forever. If you've stayed in a hotel recently, you'll notice that you have have to request daily room cleaning. It is a tactic being used by the industry to permanently get rid of potentially 180,000 housekeepers, housekeeping jobs around the country, which is mostly held by immigrant women of color. Thanks to the Hotel Workers Protection Ordinance that this council passed last year, the most senior workers in Glendale hotels will be recalled to work. But this doesn't mean our job is any way close to being done. This is all to say that there are some serious questions about whether or not Glendale should build more hotels in the new environment, and you should pass the hotel moratorium today. It is also critical, too, that you direct staff to study a hotel CUP at the very least so that the community can have a say in how hotels are built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have no more callers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'll go to my colleagues and get your...
I have Ms. Devine.
Councilmember Agaganyan.
I just have a comment to make in here that the way we're gonna face this issue. I just want to say, if, in my opinion, if any group or any person comes forward and wants to build a hotel, I do not have a problem with if that company or person does not ask for any incentive or any money from us to stop them to do what they have to do. That's one concern I have. Because this is a free country. If they want to do it, they don't want anything from us, we should not stop them. Because I was told, I was the one which for years asking how many hotels we need. And constantly they're building new hotels. But recently, I was told that based on information the staff had, that we do not have enough hotels in Glendale in relation to other cities. Okay, but if they don't want anything, I just don't want to stop anybody to build a hotel. The second thing, I would like to see a luxury hotel in here. I was told Hilton, or I don't know, what's the name now? Hilton? Still, I guess it's Hilton.
Glenmark.
What was the name?
Glenmark.
Glenmark. Is, we have a project in pipeline, and they're gonna have luxury hotel. But however, I know people, they go and spend their money because neighboring cities, there are lots of luxury hotels. So they'd rather go there, those who are more able to spend money in here. So those two items, I just wanted to bring to my colleagues and everybody's attention that we have to consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Kusakian.
Sure, thank you. I support the introduction of an interim urgency ordinance for a moratorium on hotel developments in downtown. And it's fine if we exempt those that have received at least Stage Two Design Review Approval. And the reasons for it, I think, are right before everyone's eyes. We've seen during this pandemic that travel has gone down. Hotel occupancy is now just barely at, some of our hotels just barely back up to 60%. And even though it's back up to 60%, the price per room has dropped anywhere between 20% to 30% for some of these rooms. So even though people are staying in rooms, the amount of money, the revenue that's coming in is lower. So hotels are struggling to keep people in. The industry projections that I read, independent of this report, say that prices won't come back to pre-COVID levels until 2025. I do not believe that there's any adverse effect that we would be imposing upon this city and our residents if we put on, put in a temporary moratorium against hotel development in the downtown area and control what type of uses we have. I think it's one of our duties as the council to do so, and it's what I would support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Kusakian. Councilmember Najarian?
What are the incentives that hotels get that Mr. Agaganyan was referring to?
Are you on mute? Councilmember Najarian can't hear you.
What are the incentives that hotel development is...
Still can't hear you.
We have the hotel use incentive. I don't know if Mayor Devine can hear us. Do you want me to wait until...
It seems to be cutting out or something. I'm not, yeah, I'm not hearing everything you're saying. Sorry.
His mic is on. Yeah, maybe on her side.
I don't think you're Councilmember Najarian either. The incentive that's there, it's our hotel use incentive. Essentially, the hotel is seen as a community benefit due to its kind of economic drivers and impacts to downtown. So if developing a hotel and they participate in the program, they are granted some modest increases in heightened density based on our land use chart, and that the use of the hotel itself is considered an incentive. They do have to covenant that for the life of the property, though. So that does need to remain as a hotel in order to utilize that incentive.
And they don't pay the library and parks impact fees?
We do have certain development standards that do still apply to that, such as open space and things like that. But yes, they are scaled slightly differently because it is seen as an incentive to the city itself.
How would Mr. Agaganyan's proposal work, saying that whoever wants to come in without those incentives come in outside of the moratorium? Is that a realistic... I mean, would they, would a hotel be proposed without those? Or would they wait until the moratorium is over and then see what their best shot would be?
It could be possible that they may choose to develop without incentive. Obviously, there is some benefit to having that, and they very well may want to wait until then. But to go about that process would be our original item that we brought back to council, where the moratorium would be placed only on those that are pursuing the use incentive. But those who are developing by right would still move forward.
Okay, so as we did with our downtown moratorium a year or two ago, where we wanted to review the development standards, would that be the intention here to have that study of the hotel demand? And can we put a cap, let's say, I mean, can we put a cap on the number of hotels? Is that within our purview? Or we can only deal with the design, the development standards that we impose on a hotel?
Excuse me, well, there are options such as the conditional use permit and not allowing the use within the downtown specific plan. In this presentation, we haven't considered quite as much the development standard elements such as design, the physical composition of buildings. That is also something that we could look at. There may be some challenges with that because that would impact all developments in those zones as well.
So the caller asked for a CUP along with a development agreement concept for that. How would that work? What would, I mean, in general, how would that play out?
Very similar to what we did with the downtown specific plan. We would likely need to return with several council sessions, study sessions, to identify what are those conditions and really base that around the council's priority to develop, to one, make them part of that process, but also to understand what those conditions would be for that use.
And if I could just add, Councilman Najarian, so they are different legally. A conditional use permit is a process where it's a conditionally permitted use, and you're determining whether or not the particular use that's being requested is appropriate for the zone and the location that's proposing. So the city, you know, has to have substantial evidence to approve it or deny it, you know. The development agreement is a legislative act. You're being asked to, if it was structured as a development agreement, that's an ordinance that the council would approve, to approve a development agreement. And that's negotiated between the parties. So you're saying there's some sort of by right development that's allowed, and if you want something in excess of that, then you would be required to have it. We actually have it as an option now in our DSP. A lot of the applicants go with the covenant as opposed to the development agreement. But in our view, you could require that as an entitlement that's required to approve certain incentives or certain uses that are above and beyond what you allow sort of by right.
And when would be the appropriate time to have that discussion?
I think what we're asking is if you want us to look at all these things, let us know. And if you adopt the moratorium, we would, you know, staff would go and look at all these options and present information to you and to the planning commission.
I mean, the premise is that we, some of us feel, many or some, that we're getting this surge of hotel development. Whether that's true or not isn't, you know, can be debated. But we're looking for ways to sort of, you know, pump the brakes on that sort of development. And if a CUP process could achieve that, then I would support looking into the CUP option as well on top of the study for the hotel demand and just to... I mean, the study on the hotel demand will give us the big picture. It's like, do we even need any more hotels? Maybe yes, maybe no. And if it's maybe no, we don't need any more hotels, then I think we want to pump the brakes and find a mechanism to do that.
Madam Mayor, members of city council, one of the ways to pump that brakes, pump the brakes, is to remove the incentive completely. If you recall, and I think Mr. Najarian, you may be the only one that was here at the time, maybe Mayor Devine, we implemented the incentive as a means to encourage it, take it away, and there's a lot of things that hotel development can't do without those incentives. They just can't afford it. The project performance is not viable, especially with fees. So it isn't, the CUP isn't the only way you can do it. And if you'd like to look, us to look at various ways and come back, we could do that, too.
I think we're looking for those sort of vehicles. In the event it turns out we don't need any more hotel rooms, then, you know, we've got to, you know, put a check on it in some manner. So I would support that if, as part of the process with the moratorium.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Councilmember Brodmann?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with what I'm hearing from my colleagues here. So I support the moratorium. I would like us to look at both, you know, obviously do a kind of a supply-demand analysis, look at, you know, the need for hotels generally, and also by specific type. I think we probably should look again at this question of extended stay. I know that that could be problematic because we've had some concerns about hotels that have full kitchens. But maybe we can, you know, look at that again, maybe some parts of the city that would be acceptable. I don't know. And yes, look at, you know, the different options we would have to have more say over what, how many and what types of hotels get built, like development agreements or conditional use permits, that kind of thing. So I'm in support of that. The cutoff that's under alternative two makes sense to me. And, you know, I just, I do want to say, because I asked for this to be brought forward. I'm not anti-hotel. I mean, we need the right mix of hotels for all the reasons that has been stated about, you know, as a... They serve a useful social purpose, they're an economic engine. I mean, we do want visitors to be able to stay here. We want people that are in business to be able to invite their clients here to meet with them. So all that, we, you know, I don't want to give the impression that I'm somehow anti-hotel. I just think we've had a lot of hotel development. We, there's a much more focus on, you know, the critical need for housing. All this is over the last few years. And then we have COVID, which really throws everything into a kind of a new perspective. So, yeah, I support this, and I think I'd like to see us look at all these options and come back and make some, make some good decisions.
Thank you, Councilmember Brodmann. I have a question. I've been kind of hearing the perspective that in building these hotels, we are denying affordable housing projects. Have we given up any affordable housing project for property that could have been affordable housing for a hotel?
Mayor Devine, members of city council, it's not that we've necessarily given up opportunities. If we go back, and I believe we had this conversation regarding the vagabond in the AC Hotel, because we did hear from many residents that that could be housing. That is a site that just lends itself to serving as a hotel better than housing. That's going to be subject based on each individual site. So seeing whether or not we've lost units, kind of a difficult statement to be able to make.
But isn't that the right of the developer? Isn't that the right of the owner of the property?
That is correct. Correct.
So I see this as a, something that we have to, a balancing act, that we have to balance housing with jobs and then with, of course, economic focus. So I'm in favor of the moratorium. I think we all have to remember that the Olympics are coming. And I know the airport is already in planning meetings for dealing with the crowds that we'll be expecting. So I would think that in the future, we may want more accommodations. And I do remember back in, I guess it was 2018 before COVID hit, and right about the time, I think, we were doing the study, when we were hearing from residents that there were not hotels where their family could stay. The rooms are all taken, especially during like the Rose Bowl, New Year's, and et cetera. So we definitely needed more rooms. And I think when the Olympics come around, that's going to be the case as well. But I am, I'm, you know, prepared to approve the moratorium. I know that this, this first time will be for 45 days, and then this will come back to us when? Mr. Cooper, Calvert?
That is correct, 45 days. And I believe Ms. Nukian would like to chime in on that.
Yes, Mayor Devine, council members. We will come back within 45 days of adoption. So that would be next week. We don't have a council meeting, but on the 19th it would be adopted. And then within 45 days of adoption, we will come back with an extension, which extends it total to one year. And also a 10-day report, which council will be presented with as to the steps we've taken thus far to comply with the urgency ordinance. And I just also wanted to ask if there's a consensus on the pipeline provisions. There, one option is Stage One or Stage Two. And then the second option would be at least one building, grading, or shoring permit.
Right, and so, thank you, thank you. So I will be in favor of the moratorium. Again, I want to say that I am... Again, I want to say that I am for allowing those projects which are in stage two to move forward, I think in order to get those done by the time we need them. And I would even be in favor of the Hilton, because they've been working on that project for years. So that's my, those are my, and also doing this study, of course, and finding vehicles whereby, when we don't have the moratorium, where we can halt the construction of hotels. So now I need, we need to hear from my colleagues about the pipeline projects and how you feel about those. I've expressed mine already.
Ms. Devine, also.
Yeah.
I didn't hear anybody saying anything about those who would come forward to construct a hotel with no incentive. I would like to add, even if we have moratorium, that to be added, that if they come forward, they want something from us is different. If they don't want anything, why we want to get involved with what they're gonna do?
If I may, Madam Mayor, yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Brothman?
That was what was proposed a couple weeks ago, and we pushed back on that and asked to go beyond that, to put a full moratorium, just so that we can complete this study and look at our options. We may come back, and that may be where we end up. But I think the idea, the consensus of council a couple weeks ago was, let's go, let's go beyond that. And that's still where I am, and it sounds like I'm hearing.
Correct. I mean, that's why we're here, because we had, that original proposal was here before you last month, so.
How would we even implement that? Wouldn't that be an ordinance? Needs 30 days?
Well, it's the same, it's the same ordinance. Either you're doing it on all hotels, or in the DSP, or all hotels that need the incentive. So, I mean, ultimately it's up to the council, but we need, you know. We're here for introduction, so, you know, our suggestion would be introduce it the way it's proposed, and then you'll have to have the discussion in two weeks, anyway.
Do we have to discuss the duration of this moratorium? How long it's supposed to be for?
It'll be for 45 days. So, yeah, that's, I mean, you don't have to.
Subject to extension.
Subject to extensions. The initial mor-
This whole moratorium is for 45 days, and then we extend it?
Yeah, as required by state law. So we can only, we can only adopt it for 45 days, then you have to consider it again before it expires.
And, Mr. Garcia, at that time, when it comes back, at that time, we will have a discussion on whether we want the moratorium to cover hotel developers that want incentives or that do not want incentives, correct? That's the discussion.
No, I apologize. No, so what's before you today is to introduce the ordinance as written. It would apply to all hotels in the downtown, except the pipeline, which I'm hearing, there's consensus on those with stage two, although we haven't gotten final authority on that. And then in two weeks, we'll come back for adoption of that ordinance. 45 days after that, we'll come back, and the council will consider whether or not to extend that by 10 years, 10 days, 10 months and 15 days, sorry, to make it a full one-year ordinance. Does that?
And that will be whether they want incentives or not?
No. I think we want to know today, and then also when we come back in two weeks, whether you want it to apply to all hotels in the downtown or just the hotels with the incentive. We brought this to you because the direction we got was to bring an ordinance that would apply to all hotels in downtown.
But after that, we can discuss the incentive?
Our recommendation is to make that decision two weeks from now, for two weeks from now.
Yeah, later.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Any other item, Mr. Garcia, and what elements do we want in the study, like the types of hotels, the needs, the, right? Are there any other elements?
I think we've gotten direction to do the hotel study or complete the hotel study, and then to look at all the options for entitlements that would provide the most flexibility to the city in considering hotel approvals. That's what I heard.
All right. Okay. I thought I heard Mr. Calvert say that he wanted to hear what elements of the study we want. Okay. So the, then we need the introduction of the interim urgency ordinance?
Yeah, I'll introduce the interim urgency ordinance.
With, with the pipeline for making stage-two approvals as the pipeline project.
Right, exactly.
Does, do any of my colleagues want to include the stage-one? That would be the Hilton.
Hilton's only at stage-one?
Correct. But they've been working on the-
I mean, I feel some equity issues for them, because they have been at it quite a long time, and they've been doing everything that we've been asking them. I would support stage-one if that's the only other hotel that's at stage-one.
I would, I would support that, too.
I'm okay with that.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I need to confer with Yvette on something important. Yeah, you know what? I apologize, I was, as I was talking to Yvette about it. Because we're introducing it with, with applying to all hotels, in order to make that change in two weeks on adoption, we likely would need to reintroduce it. So keeping in mind that it needs four votes, you know, we would want to hear from you today that you're comfortable with applying to all hotels in the downtown. And if not, then it comes back in two weeks. If you're still not comfortable approving it in that manner, then it would have to come back for further consideration, just so, I just want to let you know that, and then maybe you can let the staff know where you are in terms of whether you are in favor of it applying to all hotels in the downtown. I know council members Brothman and Kosakian and Councilmember Devine are, I'm not sure where council members Najarian, and I think I know where Councilmember Agajanian is.
I would say, yeah, you know, I'm thinking no one's gonna, no one is gonna do a hotel without the incentives.
Yeah.
I just, they'd be doing it by now, probably, but, so I would say I would support it as all hotels.
All hotels. Okay. Is that, then that would be how it's introduced?
That is how Councilwoman Brothman introduced it, yes.
Yeah, all hotels, but I don't think we made a decision yet on whether it's stage-one or stage-two, and I'm hearing maybe stage-one would be more palatable.
I'll go to stage-one.
I can, I'm okay with that.
I think we heard three, three yeses for stage-one.
If it's only that one hotel that's gonna, additional that comes through.
Okay, so I'll introduce it with stage-one as the cutoff? Okay.
All right, good. Okay, it has been introduced.
And then we need-
The second one, we need a motion to review the DSP hotel use incentives, the demand, in other words, to do the study. Do I have someone, will someone move that item?
Okay, I'll move that item.
Second, yes.
Yes, we have a second?
And it was moved by council, seconded by Councilmember Najarian.
Seconded by, okay, moved by Brothman, seconded by Najarian. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Brothman?
Yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Thank you all very much. Very good, very good.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Next, oh, wait, let me catch my breath here. Okay, we are adjourned at about 3:45. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to council. And we have a roll call, please, for council.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Present.
Brothman?
Here.
Kosakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?
Here. And what's next?
One would be closed session. One A has been removed. One B is conference with legal counsel pending litigation. Casa Green Incorporated et al. versus the State of California et al. LASC case number 20STCB34976. C would be public employment attorneys. D would be conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to paragraph four of subdivision D of Government Code, section 54956.9, one potential case.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you expect to report out on any of these?
We may be reporting on item 1C, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much, then we are adjourned to closed session.